It's got a, it has three up in the corner here, but we've only been provided with two.
But it didn't follow in the reading like something with, it followed like it didn't go to the next page. Maybe it was a...
Here, Mike, if this is the latest of Mr. Diagostino distributed, the blue one with changes to the name.
Okay, I didn't get that. How'd you get that?
He sent this out, as you can see, on January 10th. Came out at 9:55 and he said, "These are the ones that would be reviewing tonight."
Okay, okay, I didn't, well, alright.
Blue one, things that were added since September 10th. I think we have pages, John.
Yeah, we have them all now.
You have them all? I printed them out. This is from January 10th?
September 10th.
No, but I mean, you issued them on January 10th for the board.
I'd be in favor of holding these till the next meeting, since we just received page two now.
That's fine. Can we do that?
That's fine.
We'll take this.
Well, I, why, we want to hold them?
So I can read page two.
So you haven't read them yet. Okay.
Alright. Okay, so we'll put these on till the 28th.
Is there any corrections?
Okay. Time being, I'm going to take the public appointments out of order. Time being, 6:35. We have a request for a change of manager for the Columbus Club of Abington, 254 Hancock Street.
Mr. Chairman, just by way of disclosure, I'm a member of the Knights of Columbus, although not an active owner nor am I an officer, but I'll recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay.
I hear that.
Is Mr. Secoch here?
Yeah.
Hi, can you come up, Mr. Secoch, please? Right up here. Thank you, how are you? Good. Just identify yourself, please. Just identify yourself for us.
I'm Dr. Secoch.
And your address?
Six, Ten South Franklin Street, Fourth Brook.
And you're looking for a new, a change of manager at the Knights of Columbus, correct? Any questions with Mr. Secoch? Questions, guys? Tom, Kent?
I note.
A little motion?
A motion.
Some motion to approve the change of manager. Is there a second?
A second.
A second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Aye said it. Thank you, Mr. Secoch. Go back to the 6:30 PM appointment, which is a continuation of all alcohol Section 12 license from Abington VFW Post 5737 to Miss Strangelo Family Catering, Inc., 30 Central Street.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a member of the VFW, so I'm going to recuse myself from that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before you begin, we had a discussion, maybe no more, regarding whether or not
......
.....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
There's no prohibition in us going forward.
Can I, just a point of order, if I could, to the town manager. The issue before us, as I understand it, is the transfer of the current club license. Is that, so they're making application for a transfer, not for the new license, is that correct?
For a transfer.
Yes, correct.
Is that allowed because it is a club license?
Yeah, I actually confirmed it with the director at the ABCC of licensing, and it's, because it's a Section 12, so irregardless of the fact that it's a club, or an all-alcohol, or a restaurant, it's still at one Section 12, from one Section 12 to another Section 12.
Okay.
What you can't do is take a club license and try to transfer it to an all-alcoholic license, for restaurants, for example. They have to stay within their class.
Isn't that what's happening here? Isn't this going to be a restaurant sort of a situation?
It is, but it's still a Section 12, as far as the ABCC is concerned, and would be considered a transfer.
Okay.
What does Section 12 mean? That's...
All alcohol. So the fact that it's a club or a restaurant is secondary. It's not, it doesn't make any difference with the ABCC.
Do you have that in writing?
No, but I have it on good verbal confirmation from the director.
Sure. Just identify yourself, please.
My name is Lisa Strangelo.
How are you, Lisa?
Okay. I thought that because it was a private place, that the reason why I was going for the all-alcohol license available, which is called restaurant, even though I'm not running a restaurant, is because I am serving the public. So I didn't realize a club liquor license is transferable, like a private organization.
But it can't be transferred to a private individual. It has to remain a club license in order for you to be eligible for that transfer, and that's not what's happening here.
Because like club, I thought like club license is just a term, like the ABC uses for private organization.
The club license allows us to issue club licenses outside of the normal number of restricted applications we have by population. So these are above and beyond, and they're treated, you know, separately. So if you're transferring from one VFW to another VFW, let's say that they wanted to come in to that location, you can do that. I'm not quite sure that you can transfer a club license to a private concern outside of a club.
That's what they said at the ABCC. They said it's because it's a Section 12. She said, "Forget about the fact that it's a club or a restaurant. The fact that what's changing is the zoning, and that's your whole separate issue, and a butter notification and all that." But she said, because that was my course question, going from club to all alcohol, or she said it's a Section 12, and it's allowable.
Because, you know, I was sort of told something else. I just want to make sure we're on the same page as far as, am I going for the public liquor license in Abington? Or if it's transferable, that would have been, I think, different paperwork for me.
The difference between a club license and a all-alcoholic beverage license is the manner in which, the people in which you are serving. If you're going to open it up to the public,
Correct.
Then a club license, I don't believe, is applicable to what you're trying to do.
Right. Yes, exactly.
So I need the public liquor license.
Because you're going to be opening it up to the public.
Exactly. That's what you're getting.
But I don't know if you can transfer...
No, no, we're looking to get the actual one.
And that's the answer, because you would think that it would be a new, getting the new all-alcohol license. But from the ABCC, they said, "No, it is simply a transfer," because you can only have one location, and you're transferring that location from a club Section 12 license to an all-restaurant Section 12. So it's the location, and there's only one location.
So I'm not looking for a transfer. I'm looking for the public liquor license. Is that correct?
Well, you're looking for a transfer to the all-alcohol license that's available.
Yes.
So it's going to be a transfer of a club license to an all-alcohol.
Is that what you want?
I'm looking to, for the towns, I believe there was one, all-alcohol.
That is correct.
That's correct.
That is what I'm looking for, because it's for the public.
Right, you don't want to be, you don't want to be restricted to a club license.
Well, I'm not a, I can't even get one. Only private organizations can get a club license, so I'm not even qualified for that license at all. You have to be a group of a VFW, a DAV, a Knights of Columbus to even apply for a club liquor license. So I don't think I fall under that term. So I am looking for that one, even though it's considered restaurant, even though I'm going to be doing public-private functions. I am looking for the one that's at the town.
Okay, that being the case, Mr. Chairman. The application before us is for a transfer. The advertisement and notification to the abuddhas was for a transfer of the existing license. It would be my understanding, we cannot act on that because the application before us is for the transfer of the existing license that is held by the VFW. Now, the question comes, if that's, that's why I asked you which was it you're looking for, because if that's the one you're looking for, then you have to make another application, I would think, because this wasn't advertised as what you wanted. This was advertised as the transfer. I understand what the assistant town manager is saying. She's saying she checked with the ABCC, and for the technical aspects of it, they're saying, "Yes, you can do the transfer of the license. We don't care," because there was a time, and John's correct, there was a time when they looked on veterans organizations as separate and apart from your, the quota that you had. They amended the law and allowed and grouped everybody into one under Section 12 of the alcohol beverage law. What they're saying now is that, from our standpoint, we don't care how you classify it. As far as we're concerned, you have X amount of Section 12 licenses, of which this particular license is part and parcel of that. The license that you would want, the new one, so to speak, is also a Section 12 license. So I guess that's why I'm asking you. If you, if you're going forward with this application, based on what the assistant town manager is saying, it's proper because it's still a Section 12 license. If you, in effect, it will accomplish the same thing. But if it's your intent to apply for the new one, what I'm saying is we can't act on that presently because it wasn't advertised correctly as to what you want. So that's the reason I'm asking you. What is it that you want?
Well...
I believe, with all due respect, the publication did say a change of license from club to all-alcohol restaurant.
It's a transfer of the existing license. It's not an application for a new license. If you're applying for a new license, it has to, when somebody make, we have an existing license. The minute somebody comes in and files an application for that license, we're required by statute to hold the hearing within X amount of days. In this particular case, it's a transfer of an existing license. So when you fill out the paperwork and sign it, there's a little checkoff thing here. It says, "Transfer of the license." That's why when we advertise it, it's to transfer from the VFW to your organization, and that's...
So if that is, if that's the, if it's legal for me to have public functions on a transfer of that license, then it's acceptable. That would be fine.
That's fine.
Yes, correct?
Yes.
As long as, and that is, so that's great.
That's been the interpretation, and that's why we filled it out the way we did. It is a little ambiguous.
Okay.
George, can you just give us a little background on what's going on there and what you're looking for?
My pleasure to represent Lisa Strangelo this evening, in an effort to obtain use of the building at 30 Central Street in Abington, now formerly known as the Abington VFW Post. Unfortunately, the times change, and the VFW has found themselves with fewer and fewer opportunities to hold functions there, and unfortunately, they've also had to find themselves in a situation where they had to sell the building. Now, in an effort to make optimum use of the building and the location itself, which has had a proud tradition for many years, Lisa is proposing to have a function hall. I think we have a semantic problem here, if you will. I think the word "restaurant" can be overused or misinterpreted when we look at what a typical restaurant might be. What Lisa desires to have there is a function hall, use of the alcohol license there for providing these libations for the people that attend her functions, and to be able to help people to celebrate the goods and the bads of this life. In other words, anniversaries and things like that, and also bereavement parties, if it's so called for. She has a proud tradition herself, 12 years, I believe, in Braintree, of performing these functions for people. She's well-known in that area, but she's just found that it's time to move on, and the 30 Central Street location seems to fit the bill rather well to her. She's been negotiating for some time with the veterans. She's made a lot of friends in the area. She's making more day by day, I like to think, and she has some wonderful plans ahead. And I would ask her to share some of those plans with you, so that you get a picture of what she has in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, you want to just give us a little explanation, please?
Basically, in the building there, and what I'm all looking to do is all, as I put it on the bottom of that paper, is a public-private functions, so as invitation-only, for any occasion. I'm not looking to host, like, live bands and functions without food. So all of my functions I do, I have food, and there are rules and stipulations for every job. Mostly, a lot of fundraising, weddings, things of that nature, which I don't need the alcohol to be served inside the building. In the back area there, I am not looking for any type of liquid to be served outside. At the zoning meeting, I was definitely enlightened about a lot of concerns of the neighbors and stuff, and so I like, I need to work with them on certain things, but I'm looking to eat a little food outside during 12 to 5 on maybe a weekend, with no alcohol or entertainment, like live music or something like that out there. I cater food, so I do takeout food. I mean, I'm really a cook, and I've been in the function hall for 10 years in Braintree. So that's what I do. So I'm looking to seek out that property to continue my business, as what I've been doing for the last 12 years.
The all-alcohol license, of course, is beneficial to her goals and so forth and so on, and I don't think that without it, we would be able to make this kind of an offer to the board for your consideration. She has many far-reaching plans for use of the hall, for, as I said before, these functions that come up from time to time. She's already been approached by the St. Vincent's Ball, and she's been approached by the Abington High School Super Bowl party for their victorious team. Both of these functions have been booked, and she would like to be in there cooking and hosting and so forth, these events. She also has other ideas about open houses for the town and things like that, to help her to celebrate her new venture. She has learned of the family movie situation. She'd like to be able to do that, but not a priority, I guess. But she also would like to host. Okay, alright. But we talk about comedy shows, craft shows, things like that can be held indoors, dances and so forth. I guess you could look at it as a furtherance of what the veterans have been doing for so many years, by being able to provide a place where the townspeople and those from out of town can congregate and have a good time. That basically is her goal. She would be seeking some hours that would reflect her needs and things like that. She has been approached by numerous organizations to have seminars and teaching on the premises. This would require early opening without alcohol. This would, again, typically be a 7 o'clock in the morning opening. People would come in, and they'd also be welcome to take these seminars, be provided with something to eat, be it a breakfast, be it a lunch, depending upon what their needs are. Opening the alcohol at noon time on most days when the functions are going to be held, and closing the bar and so forth around...
Whatever the law is.
So she's subject to your wishes and wants to be a good neighbor. Again, she has opened up her presentation and so forth to the neighbors in the general area of the building itself, and I like to think has made some good progress by reassuring the people that we're not looking for the typical, if there is such a word, restaurant in this particular case, but something that would be a bit more finite, would welcome people to come in for an occasion.
Are you going to be doing weddings and that sort of thing, Mr.?
Everything I do is all invitation-only, and that's what we do. So any type of event that's held is wedding. I mean, you're invited there, so we don't have a couple people coming in by invitation-only.
There was some talk, and again, I think this may have been the source of some of the displeasure or the questions that arose, of there being something akin to a sports bar being opened at the location. What she had mentioned to me, and what I would put forth, is the fact that the Members Lounge, which you may have had an occasion to visit once or twice in the course of your lives, she would like to keep open when there's a special occasion.
Only, yeah, like by invitation-only. Like, I don't want that to be open during the week. Only if you want to come with a group or a pair of people.
And she would have the televisions there. She would have light fair, and she would cook and serve to both of the persons. But again, it's an exercise of the all-alcohol license that she would be seeking. She would certainly be akin to any stipulations as far as hours and things like that are concerned. Her wish is to accommodate as many people as she possibly can, and be a good neighbor to the town of Abington at the same time.
Ken?
If I could, on the information that you provided us, it seems pretty well, in my opinion. Would you, I guess my thoughts would be, in order to protect the interest of the neighborhood too, would you be amenable to having this as a condition of the license, what you've laid forth here? Okay, you understand by, if it's approved, and I don't know where it's going, but if it's approved and if this is a condition of the license, these are the only functions that you can have at the facility. You can't go outside of there. Okay. Second question, do you, have you purchased the property yet, or you still in?
It's in contingent.
You don't own it presently?
Correct.
It's contingent on the license.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, and then Tom.
I just had a question. I've been to the Emerald Hall in Braintree for a couple comedy shows. There's a smaller room on the left, and then there's the big function hall. Is that sort of the same type for small functions? You'd have the Members Lounge?
Correct. That Members Lounge won't be like a, like they use it now every night and stuff. What I'm doing there is just functions on a smaller scale, and it's the same. So if there was a little comedy show of 40 people, you'd get a group together, like if the school only turned out 60 people or so, we could do them in there, stuff like that.
That was basically my question. The smaller Members Lounge, as we now know it, is not going to be open every night if I want to go home and get a pizza on the way home or something. It's not going to be open to the public?
Correct.
Correct. It'll only be open for small functions?
Right. So if you maybe knew that there was a game on Thursday, and you called and said, you know, "Me and 20 friends would like to come there," then you would go through like a hall rental process to be able to have that area.
Right, and then it would be invited guests only. It wouldn't be people off the street.
Mr. Chairman, just, I notice on the application, it has a couple of financial institutions which you'll be going for financing, 50 at one, 50 at the other, but one of them is an SBA loan. And I guess my question is, what does it mean that the applicant needs to pledge the license to get that loan? What would happen if there was a default situation in the case of the lender? Does that mean they assume the license? Because in the application, it implies that you are pledging the license.
One at least of the lenders has required that we pledge the license as a condition of the loan itself.
Tell me what that means. Say, your client goes into default. Does that mean that the bank now holds the license? Or can we reallocate it to somebody else?
They would take it away from Lisa, and it would be up for someone else to assume.
On who? On the town's basis, or who? I guess I'm confused how that works.
I believe that the bank wanted to attach, look like, just for collateral.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, Jake, could I ask, Jake, you must have come through.
You know, Kevin?
So if I was to default, which we hope that would never happen, that license would go back to the town as your all liquor license that you ran. So no one could just, I can't just sell that license to anyone. It all has to go through the town.
That's correct. It'd be transferred once again.
It would be redeemed back to the town. That was sort of something they added at the end to the bank, like to attach that liquor license, and I actually got financed without that being part of the budget. And then they decided to just, another piece of collateral. So the law would be that that would have to come back to the town. That license can't be sold without your approval to anybody.
So when it's sold, do we, do the proceeds go to the financial institution? Again, when I think of collateral, I think of a mortgage.
Right.
Bank gives me money to buy or build a house. If I default, the collateral is that house. They come in and basically, they own it.
But a liquor license is terminated if I wasn't to be using it. Anyway, so that license really is worthless to the bank? I just think they wanted to add that at the end. I mean, I wasn't sure why they did that, but it's just something they wanted to assure that they would have that as another asset, which technically it really is an asset, I don't think it became right down to it.
Because the bank can't issue the license to anybody else.
Correct.
It goes back to the town. There's a value to the license, particularly if it's the last license in town and there's no others available?
Well, it makes the business more valuable, in fact, that you have a license, so.
The other question I had is, I didn't notice on here, I thought I heard at some point around town that you may be catering out of there, so I guess the question would be, are there going to be trucks, people coming and going to cater at other events in the south shore?
I will, I will be using the kitchen to cater. I do not own any trucks. I have one van. So that would be a van that would be parked there overnight, and that's the only vehicle I have as far as, I'm not like a big major.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Will you still be running the Emerald Hall also, or are you giving that up and moving your operation here?
Yeah, 100% to be moved here.
Oh, coming here. Ken?
I guess I have another question, maybe two. In your contract for lodge functions, do you have a stipulation that they have to hire a police detail if it's a night function, if there's a crowd over so many people, you know?
Well, usually I think the town dictates that rule. I've talked to the police department, and I try not to do any functions that require police details, because I am the police detail before they even get in the room. But if I was to let something go that I thought, then yes, I would definitely plan on having police detail. I don't think the town addict loves to get involved in police detail because of the liability, sort of, but, you know, they're more, they're there, because I've talked to, I've already talked to Mr. Garrity and stuff, and so anything that's needed as far as they go, they'll be there. I try not to promote any function that needs a police detail. If, I'm used to doing functions of like 90, 230, 240 people. To get up in the 200, 220s, I mean, I'd be more than glad to have a police detail at any of those events.
I believe the police would have the final say as to what needed to be chaperoned, if you will, or not. And again, it'd be full compliance from Lisa's point of view, I can assure you. I also just wanted to add that Lisa has successfully completed the SERF SAFE certification, crowd managing training program, allergen awareness training program. Crowd Managing Training Program, Alogen Awareness Training Program, and all of the people that are employed by her have completed the tipping program, so they're fully aware of...
Tips.
Crowd control, if you will, and all of the requirements that go with the license if you associate.
The health agent would be very proud of that.
I'm hopeful, when I saw her here earlier.
There were a number of conditions from the building inspector. Have all those been taken care of?
Degrees traps and all that?
Yes.
We have them set up to be done, but it was going to be...
Contingent.
Contingent on...
Contingent upon, of course.
License.
There's a lot of contingencies.
There are a lot of contingencies, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if we go with these stipulations, as Kevin suggested, possibility, they're pretty strict for the picnic area. I mean, twelve to five with no alcohol, I just wanna make sure that, you know, that's livable with you. No alcohol, I mean, twelve to five, I know, because they have functions there with alcohol out there currently, so I just wanna make sure that if we do approve it with these stipulations, that you're okay with that.
Well, I am, because the neighbors, I think, have been undergoing severe conditions for a little while, and, you know, that outside area, first of all, at a certain time, I wouldn't expect there to be allowed to be anything going on out there anyways after dark, but it's a really big concern of them, and I don't wanna make enemies with the neighbors, I want it to be tolerable for them. So if it means giving up that area altogether, I would actually have to do that, and that would be okay with me, too. Right now, I have nobody interested in the outdoor area, because I'm not an outdoor caterer, but there's not too many picnic areas, so. Nope, that's totally fine, maybe no alcohol, and if something arises in the future that may be there and wanting to be served out there, I don't know if there's one day licenses here in the town, if there was an occasion that may arise, that I would come back to the town for maybe a one-day permit for outside. But my business plan, I do not need alcohol outside. Or music, or an entertainment, I just wanna cook a little cookout.
Any other questions, concerns? Do we have any motions? Is this a public hearing, or is it, it's not really a public hearing?
Not really, but there may be a butters here, because they had a public hearing for the zoning board.
In front of the zoning board, yeah.
Right, which required a butter notification.
Anybody here who would like to speak? It's not a public hearing, but I would allow maybe one or two neighbors if they'd like to speak.
Can I just say one more?
Sure.
I think that, like, the zoning issue, too, like, I think the neighbors think that the zoning was going to change there, and I don't think the zoning, we were looking for a variance, not a change in the actual zoning of their neighborhood. That was a big concern to us.
Looking for a change of use, there's a change of use, basically, I think is what they...
Like a little variance, almost like a special pass, just for me, and if they was to ever sell that, that it goes back to the town. I think that they would feel really good if something like that could be etched in stone through, you know, through the town officials, so they are assured that their neighborhood isn't gonna turn into a Home Depot down the road if anybody was ever to sell it.
Yeah. We don't have control over that end of it, the zoning board does, but we have control over licensing, and we can put restrictions on that, which I think is probably what we may do.
Just to make your appearance.
Yes, I appreciate that. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Zeb White, eighty-four Central Street.
Can you just come up forwards, please? Don't worry about it.
There's no microphone over there anyway, so just be on TV.
No cameras on.
Um...
Identify yourself one more time.
Zeb White, eighty-four Central Street.
Thanks.
I was very much against what was gonna happen because of what we have all dealt with, kind of love parties and things that have been going on. She has extended her friendship to me, and we have spoken, and I have to give trust to someone that I believe in, and I do believe in her, and I trust her word, and I think that what she has to offer to the community and to that building would be wonderful. And I just, at this point, I mean, she would be my neighbor, she's in my backyard, and I would be more than happy to welcome her in.
That's very nice.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Very nice. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, ma'am, yes?
No, ma'am, we're finished.
No, no, I don't have my glasses on.
I'm Jim Boyd, fifty-six Central Street, and I agree with what Debbie just said. We've had the opportunity to speak independently with Lisa, and we both like what she said. I live right next door to the apartment, step over my fence, and I'm on their property. The person who's going to be affected the most would be me, and the things that she has presented to me sound reasonable, they sound very forthcoming, they sound very futuristic. I mean, it sounds like she's planning everything out very nicely, and she's keeping everybody's interests in the neighborhood. So I go for it. I wasn't exactly against it, I had some second thoughts about it, but after talking to her, I spoke with her a good hour yesterday, I think she really means well, I think she's gonna do her best to not do anything that's gonna upset her neighbors. Because we could make it pretty miserable for her. Not very seriously. I wouldn't want to, but people could.
Yeah. Well, you appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. This'll be the last one.
Marilyn Griffin, eighty-eight Central Street, and I only have two questions. One is, do we have any idea of, with the functions that she's had in Braintree at the Emerald Hall, if there's been any police activity needed, and just kind of what the history of that type of, what has been in Braintree, so we can have an idea of what might happen in Abington, and...
Why don't we let her answer that one?
So, I'm just curious.
Well, I've been there for twelve years, and, you know, I say out of, you know, I have, you know, a good central model of functions. I mean, way back in the day, in the very beginning, a few times, you know, the police have had to come there, and it's kind of hard to control every single thing, and that was a long time ago. So I think I'm like seven years almost right now police free, as far as if they're not in the hall for their function.
Right, right.
I get police detail when I feel needed, which is few and far between, and so we have a very good, great, if you were to call the mayor in Braintree and the things that I've done for that time, you would get a great...
Okay, great. Because that was a question that was never asked, and the other question is, just to clarify, so I know this may be more of a zoning board question, but it's our thirty now. If the zoning board approves her variance, and she, ten years down the road, whatever, wants to sell or move out of that facility, it reverts back to its current zoning, and it's not like another event venue could take over from her. That's, do you know what I mean?
I know what you mean. I'm not...
I think, no, it's a granted...
I don't know if that's a zoning board question.
I'm not sure. Oh, actually, the zoning commissioner is here, so.
No, if they approve the variance and the variance is recorded in a twenty-one day period, that it would remain allowed.
For this particular use?
For the use that the zoning board approves. That's nothing to do with the licenses that you approve.
But if the function stopped in ten years from now, would it revert back to our thirty? Or is that variance with the land or with the owner? I think it's with the land.
The use is abandoned for two years, then, yes, I believe it would, the variance, that portion of it would be... And it would then revert back to what?
The R thirty.
That's a slippery slope as to whether it's abandoned or not.
But, I mean, but the zoning remains R thirty with a variance on it?
The zoning is R thirty in your area, and will remain that until it is ever changed. There is a variance in that area for this one specific property that they're being talked about that allows them to do things that are not strictly allowed in the R thirty district as what had happened when it was zoned, I forget what it was again, when it was allowed, or in that district, or a nonprofit organization such as the one that exists now. And then the zoning was changed to R thirty, thirty is now, they are, the VFW is resisting non-conformity, and that would continue and go forward, because it's rezoned, doesn't take something away from somebody. Now, there were some technicalities with regards to what she is doing, she is for profit, which would be an extension of non-conformity and catering, is another extension for, of a non, another non-conformity, bad non-conformity, and that was what originally the reason I sent them to the zoning board.
So Marshall, is that what the, is that what the application for the variance is, is for those two things, as far as extending the use for catering and nonprofit?
Yes, catering and nonprofit. Then it's a tricky issue with regards to how they would deal with profit, what type of differentiation are they looking for in terms of that, and that opened up a whole issue with regards, then there's that outdoor use there would be council on eighty-handled by all the country, looking at everything that went on, and determining what was the highest and best use center, so.
Okay, but these are issues for the zoning board to determine, not...
I think they can be restrictive if they want.
That's correct.
What goes on, so she's got tied up, you know, subject to get the licenses squared away and get the variances that... I don't, I don't strictly advise you to have...
Yeah, I understand.
And I believe that's what you're attempting to do now. I didn't come here prepared to discuss this at all.
I know. Sorry, thank you.
This is just...
Thanks. Anything else?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I will move we approve the transfer of the license from the VFW post five seven three seven to Master Angelo Family Catering Incorporated, inclusive of the change of manager, the pledge of license, the entertainment and common vigilance, the license to be conditioned with the points that have been submitted by the applicant at the hearing, as well as all inspectional services must be satisfied prior to the final issuance thereof. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I agree.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll make you proud.
Thank you. I just want you to take a quiet break.
Thank you.
Good luck. There you go. I think everyone wants to sit there. Hey, Buckley, you're next.
Thank you.
And then the with three.
We lost the young guy, too.
Yeah, let's go. Come on, Andy, wield that gavel, we'll get through this thing.
We're gonna have, item number two is Mr. Buckley's request for a letter to attorney, to Congressman Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was, as you recall, a month ago, and at your suggestion, the issue I raised was put on the agenda for this month's meeting. So I think it's, I forwarded a letter to the, to your office, and I'm sure it was in your packet...
It is in our packet, yes.
Over the weekend, and repeat my request that I think it is helpful when a publicly-elected board weighs in on the issue of gun violence, gun control proposals. I suggested a, as you read the letter, a few issues that you may or may not want to consider in any correspondence you would have with Congressman Lynch. I think it's a situation that is long past resolution. It's ironic, I suppose, it was a month ago today that the shootings occurred in Newtown, Connecticut, and this year is the, fifty years this fall will be the assassination of President Kennedy, and forty-five years this spring will be the murders of Martin Luther King and Robert F. Kennedy, and it seems as though we have not made much progress. So I would hope that the board would consider the issue of proposing to the Congress on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, gun control proposals that would be enacted by, that could be enacted by the Congress, and that would respond to some of the issues that I raised in the letter. If, in fact, the board would choose not to be specific in their recommendations, as I outlined them in the letter, I would hope that they would certainly correspond with the Congressman and ask him to look into the subject of gun violence, the subject of safety of people in the United States, particularly children, and that legislation could be enacted to support the gun control measures that I suggest.
Any questions? Next, Jack.
Thank you.
Did you want to vote on it?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I...
Did you want to vote on it?
No, I'd be happy to. I think that, I think we have an obligation, obviously, in light of what's happened in society. I don't think anybody, any stretch of the imagination, takes the extreme and says that, you know, people who have firearms for hunting purposes and so forth, that's not what the debate, in my view, is about nationally. I think the question becomes is the high-capacity magazines, the automatic high repetition firing, and certainly, I think, background checks, the very least. I think it's reasonable, and I think it's something I would concur with Mr. Buckley, that I think we should wait upon Congressman Lynch, as well as Senator Warren, and for the time being Senator Kerry, before he's confirmed, as well as our state legislative delegation to just let them know our thoughts. I think this is an issue that will be, it's obviously gonna rise to the national debate very quickly, and I think it's important that our elected officials hear the sentiments from us lowly elected officials down at the bottom. So I would make it a motion that we correspond with Congressman Lynch, Senator Kerry, and Warren, and send copies to our legislative delegation in the event that it comes up at the state level, based on the sentiments that I've just expressed and has been outlined in Mr. Buckley's correspondence.
I would second for discussion purposes. Can I just, I agree, Kevin, wholeheartedly, and I think it's important. I think I read a stat that there's more gun dealers in this country than there are McDonald's, which is a staggering statistic, and I think it's appropriate for ordinary citizens to try to, you know, counter that lobby to keep things the way they have, and they have been for, you know, fifty years or so. My question, though, is, as I asked last time, who writes the letter?
Who? Well, I think somebody initially would have to take a stab at it and then bring it back to see, you know, and you don't want this to go on and on and on, it's, you know, because it could, just like it will in Congress, but...
You want us to put something in draft form, and then you can look at it at the next meeting?
I think that'd be great, John, if you could do that.
We'll do that. We'll put something in...
My own personal feelings, again, the gun violence is, it's out of control, but I think we need to take a comprehensive look at everything, not just the gun side, but that, you know, there's mental health issues.
The psychological part of it.
You know, there's a lot of things that need to go into it, and I liked Jack's idea about the comprehensive look at the gun violence more, targeting on one particular thing, but, yeah, I don't mind if you want to take a stab at it.
Yeah, we'll take a stab at it. Get a draft to you for the next... Get a draft to you for the next meeting.
Okay.
I think, well, on the motion, if we authorize the.
Well, we do have a motion in a second, yeah.
What was the motion?
To draft.
To draft a letter.
Initially draft a letter.
No, to draft a letter in accordance with the comments that I made and with what Mr. Buckley has indicated.
Motion in a second. Is there any, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you very much, Sheldon.
Thank you. Item number three, open special town meeting warrant today, I guess, and close the warrant on March fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen. You have a motion?
I make the motion.
Give me a second.
Second.
The warrant will be opened today and will be closed on March fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen for the special town meeting. Opposed in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number four, open annual town meeting warrant, January fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and close the warrant on February first, two thousand and thirteen.
So move.
A second.
Just a que, is there a reason why we're just having that two-week window for the warrant to be opened? It's kind of a short window for the annual.
Annual. We can probably do it until the middle of February if you'd want. I don't think that there's a hard, fast rule about that. We usually do it at the end of the month. We open it up sometimes earlier.
I just think two weeks is a short, is a short period of time.
It just seems like it would be reversed, John. It would seem like the special might be a shorter time than March fifteenth and the annual might go to March fifteenth.
Well, the reason why, the reason why we do the special longer is that it takes us a while, you know, to understand what bills need to be paid that haven't been paid. And, you know, you, you need the money within that fiscal year that you're appropriating. So we'd like to keep it longer for the special because that becomes the catch-all. The warrant articles are, for the annual, are usually set in stone to some measurable degree, you have the budget. We don't have any more warrant articles with regard to changing the bylaws or, or the charter, I don't think. So that's, I think the March fifteenth is fine because they're governed by two separate statutes, the special and the annual. So, I mean, it, it gives us the chance to make sure that we do all our housekeeping and we get everything on that we need to.
But to follow that point, I'd like to see the annual open longer than February first.
Okay, do the fifteenth of February, a month, is that, that's about what we do. Just, just one question, how does that affect the Finance Committee? If I was putting everything together on them and putting the onus on them because they have to make a report in a timely fashion? Well, we have an April first.
Okay, as long as we can do that, that's.
Town meeting, I, I don't think that that'd be a problem.
And the February fifteenth date would still give you enough time to.
Yeah.
I just think it gives people, if they wanted to put in petition articles and that sort of thing, I think a two-week window is kind of quick to turn, turn around.
No, no, there's no doubt, it's just that last year seemed like we experienced some problems with the print, just prior to that. Let's see what the fifteenth is. The Friday. Oh, it's pretty good.
All right, so Kevin's amended his motion to February fifteenth as far as the closing.
And that's Friday, you said? It's Friday, the fifteenth. It's better than the thirteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number five, discussion on resignations from the Conservation Commission. We had four resignations of full members and one resignation of the associate member, I guess he was coming for. And that's been posted.
That has.
Right, and I think we've received some applications already.
We have.
Quite a few.
Yeah, at least four.
Yeah, good ones. We have one gentleman here tonight, I think he was here anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we accept them with regret and our thanks. I know that there's been a little controversy around this, but I think we can't ignore the fact that these people have spent a great amount of time serving the town in two particular instances, well over twenty years. And I, I'm sorry to see it happen, but it happened, and I just want to make that as a motion to accept them with regret and our thanks for their many years of service.
Any second? Any discussion? I agree, they, they all served long periods of time and put in a lot of time, so they should be congratulated for that, thanks. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item, item number six, report from Ken Coyle regarding Town Manager Search Committee's progress and discussion as to whether the board would like to provide the search committee with a salary range or a salary cap for the position. Ken?
Just a quick rundown of what we've done so far. We, we put it in the Beacon, which is the Mass Municipal Association's magazine that goes out to all the towns and all the elected officials in the towns. It's going to be in their print edition, being published on February first. It's online now, it's on their online edition now. Also, if you go on the town's website, we, we have a special link on the bottom of it and it's a detailed description, it's a copy of the ad that's going to be, and it's also got a detailed description about qualifications, application procedure, that sort of stuff, a profile, the town manager, profile of the community. We are meeting again Wednesday to go over the draft, interview questions, and we're going to send interview schedules. We also sent out to every town in the state a note saying that we have an opening available. We've already received, I think, about eight replies and it hasn't even been in the paper, in, in the magazine yet, so that's basically my update. I'll answer any questions if anybody has, has any. I guess the other question is, we had not concerns, but we just wanted to know if the Board of Selectmen wanted to come up with a salary range or a high or low. And I'll just state what's in, what's in the ad is salary and benefits negotiable, D O Q, depending on qualifications, and then if they go to the, the detailed description on the website, Town Manager's salary and benefits will be negotiated by the Board of Selectmen and shall be based on qualifications, experience, and other relevant factors. The current salary for the existing town manager is approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Any thoughts?
I do.
Can I count?
I think that the issue in terms of, as far as recruitment goes, if you look at any firm that, actually, a headhunting firm, for lack of a better description, when they make an advertisement, they put out there what the salary range is, either not to exceed or to give people that are applying some idea. And I think in this particular instance, I'm afraid that if we don't do something to articulate what it is we have in mind, that it could have a chilling effect. And the reason I say that is when people make application, they'll go through the initial process, but one of the questions is going to be, well, what, what are you talking for salary? If the committee is hampered and say, well, we don't know, you've got to go to the Board of Selectmen, people may think twice, because if they want to step out into the, the public arena, have their bare face out there, have their current employer know they'll look in, they want to be able to know that they have a shot at something. If, if it's just, well, we don't know, I think you're going to have people that may have second thoughts about it. And I think if we want to have a, a open and, you know, transparent, if you will, process, I think that's what we have to do. I did a particular study that I emailed to everybody, you gave it, I looked at all the South Shore communities, broke down the salary, not of the, of town managers, town, town administrators, as well as positions with town manager authority, as well as the requisite benefits going across the board. I think you can see the initial salary range goes from a low of a hundred and twenty-eight to a high of one thirty-five, just on the salary itself, excuse me, of the average salary for, for those with town manager authority is at the one thirty-five level, and then there are benefits added on top of that. So I'm prepared to make, I'm gonna make a motion, we'll see where it goes, but I think I'd like to have a discussion as to what everybody's thoughts are with that scenario, because I, I do think we have to be proactive, we have to give the search committee, you know, some tools to, to work with, and we're not indicating what the salary will be because we still have to negotiate, but I think we have to give some guidance so that they know when they're talking to people what it is people can expect. And, and they may look at it and say, well, you know something, thanks, but no thanks. Or they may turn around and say, I'm willing to take that, that bet, but I do think we have to provide some guidance.
Anybody else?
Well, I, I just, I'd support Kevin for reasons that I think it's important to put as much information out there for prospective candidate as appropriate. You see, a lot of times, we have candidates come in, it's a little bit nebulous on what the job is, what the salary is, what the benefit is, and, and you go through the process that wastes a lot of time of a candidate, wastes a lot of time of the search committee to find out it's not a good fit. So for me, more information out there, and even in addition to salary, what the benefit package would be, maybe even a form or a sample contract of what a contract might look like for the right person to come on board.
My only thought on that, Tom, is aren't you, if we do that, aren't we kind of hampering our negotiating position right off the bat? If we're going to disclose this is the salary, these are the benefits?
Well, I, I think usually, Andy, what I see is it's usually a range, you know?
But we have, I mean, the range now is, the current salary is almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I would think most people would think the range is going to start there, or it's, it's going to be in that range of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I, I don't know. I think you get more applicants by not disclosing it, only because, who knows? If somebody thinks, oh, that's a salary that's out of my range because I don't, you know, necessarily have.
Let me ask this question, the, the last two times we went out, was in the top candidate, didn't they withdraw? I'm not sure what the reasons were.
They did.
Okay, but.
Didn't get the salary with the, the one that I was involved with.
Okay, they didn't get, never got the salary. So why, why did they withdraw?
I'm not going to disclose that he withdrew on his own.
He was smart.
He was smart. Good point.
But we had, when I, when we did it three years ago, and we didn't have a salary range at all, we had the prior, I think, the prior town manager's salary, which was much lower than what is being paid now. I think we had sixty or seventy applicants put in. And it was a very good pool of people that, you know, put in there, so.
I ju, I just have one question and maybe this will help out. The current advertisement calls for a four-year degree and a five years of equivalent experience.
Right, which is part, that's per charter, that's.
I, I thought that there was a requirement, or there was a preferred master's degree, a master's degree was preferred in the language of that. I think if you increase the requirements from an educational perspective, I think a salary range is going to be very important to, to work out, but, you know.
Just a, just a bachelor's degree. Just a bachelor's degree is what the charter says.
Yeah.
Ken?
Two points, I, I agree with Kevin. That's kind of one of the reasons I brought it forward, but, but I also agree with what you have to say. Now, didn't we work hard over the last couple of town meetings to get a personnel board? I mean, wouldn't it be prudent if they come up with a salary recommendation, and we can work from the benefit package end? Yeah, I would think.
Recommendation, that's, that's all.
No, I, I, I know what you're saying, but I think it falls under the job description of the Board of Selectmen to set that, not so much the, the personnel board is supposed to set salary ranges for non, non-union personnel, not, at people that weren't covered under a contract. I think the structure of the personnel board is that the manager serves on that, on that board. You, you don't want this, the board that the manager serves on to set the salary range.
Kevin?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we indicate to the Town Manager Search Committee that we're offering a range between a hundred and twenty-eight thousand and a cap of a hundred and forty thousand negotiable total package, and that doesn't hamper us in any way, shape, or form, but it gives some guidance to the applicants as to what we're talking about, within the range depending on their qualifications.
A second?
I'll second for discussion purposes. Again, Kevin, when you ran this, and I thought it was a great analysis, what did you come up with an average here? For town manager authority base salary, a hundred and thirty-five, but then if you look to the right, they're obviously different in some particular instances, they have deferred comp, a percentage of deferred comp, or a set, set figure for deferred comp, which is not factored in the base salary. Others, some have car allowances, some don't, some have health insurance allowance, some don't. So it's, it's kind of a mixed bag across the board, and I think, again, looking at the market study, the market analysis in this area, I think clearly it supports salaries in that range. And I think, again, I feel strongly on the issue because I know if people make application, you may have good people that, you know, that turn around and say, well, jeez, if that's what you were going to pay me, I wouldn't have gone through all of this and I, I would have bowed out, and I don't think it's fair to us or to the, to the applicants to, you know, go through the process and then go through that. So I think that in the end, it, it gives us a range that doesn't hamper us, and I think it shows that we're in the marketplace for this area of the state.
Can I take a look at that?
Would you consider one twenty-five to?
To what?
Start.
To start? One twenty-five, yeah, but a cap of one forty. I, I agree with you, you have to have something to look at, and I'd be more prone to serve the one twenty-five, given what we've already gone through with the existing town manager. I'm not going to get into that, but I have feelings about, about where we are with that, so.
So one twenty-five to one forty, if that's, I'll make, I'll amend that motion to make it for that.
What was your original motion?
One twenty-eight. You beat me down three grand, has that?
Go ahead, Ken.
One twenty-five.
Motion in a second, I, I, just as far as some of these communities, some of these communities are much larger than Abington. That's, you know, one thing that I see here in multiple.
But they have town manager authority.
They do.
You have to look at that.
But they're still, they're managing a much larger town. People, Bridgewater is almost twice the size of Abington, that's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred.
But look at Rockland, Rockland's population.
Rockland's a hundred thousand.
Yeah, and Rockland, so, I mean, if you look at population.
Rockland's a hundred thousand, it's not a hundred and twenty.
But that's not a town manager, though. But if you're going to use that analogy, you can, they're all over the lot. But just to clarify, Rockland is not a town manager.
No, it's not, no, it's not.
I think, I think Pembroke, is that town manager?
Town administrator. Town administrator. But included in these averages are these ti, Plymouth, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Plymouth is a much, much bigger town.
Correct.
Largest town in the state.
Area was.
Area was.
East of the Mississippi.
I agree with salary range, I just think it's a little too high, that's all.
Well, we have a motion in a second, so that's where we stand now. And what was, what was the range?
One twenty-five to one forty.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed. Ayes have it. Item number seven, Town Manager's consultation with the Board on the preparation of the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen budget pursuant to Article Six, Section Six dash two of the Town Show. That's you, John?
That's me? No, I don't know. Breaking news. You have received a copy of the draft budget, the initial, initial budget. Some of those numbers include potential estimates on revenue, others do not. One of the things that I think, from an administrative perspective, we need to focus on this year is additional police personnel, additional highway personnel. These are two very large, high-demand departments. We have recently brought up the, the fire department, although ideally there should be a six-man rotational shift. They're at five at the current time. They have opened, you know, Station Two, and I know that that's not my desire, that's the, a fire chief's desire, he runs a department. So I, I would defer to his expertise in those areas. So from my perspective, the, it's going to be about public safety, I think that that's a very important component. When I started here, most of the departments were on life support. That has since improved, and we have a healthy financial picture, which I'm going to discuss when I get to the breakdown of non-collective salary adjustments. But those are my offers as far as where I think the budget needs to go, and certainly open to suggestions from, from the board.
John, could you give a status of where we stand with the school departments fiscal cliff, which I was under the impression is going to hit in two thousand and fourteen? And, and my understanding is, I don't know if it was top money, there was some money that the government made available to the schools, Abington to High. the government made available to the schools, Abington, to hire additional teachers, support people, that in FY 2014, that will go away. And my understanding, it was around $400,000 or so. Have you had any consultation with the superintendent?
Yes, we have, actually, as a matter of fact. I don't know if I have it here with me or not.
I guess the question is, have you got that covered? Where are you in relationship to the other needs? Because there's always going to be more needs than money that's available.
Well, let's talk about the school budget for a second. They have contractual obligations of $374,000. Those are fixed. The grant cliff, funding cliff, is $426,000. There are, the federal jobs bill that they stretched out, but more importantly, there's the $80,000 grant in addition to the funding for positions that is no longer there. So they have employed people on a grant, that grant has expired. It's $426,747. We believe that there will be an ability for us to cover some of that in relationship to the municipal budget. But just to go over, you know, where they stand overall, they have $1 million, $1,090,000 for restoration. Now, these are, this is the school committee's complete restoration budget. It's $3 million over last year. And they're looking at programs with other districts that could go up or down. The total budget increase is $3,010,618. We are approximately $2.6 million out of sync with respect to, you know, the budget as we estimate it today. But there are certain issues within the budget that we still need analysis on. So this is just a very draft budget.
On the back of a cocktail napkin, what I heard you say is to keep services where they are today, you had $300,000 for contractual agreements, I'm assuming those are raises or whatever. You have another 400?
It's 800,000, over 800,000.
So 800,000?
Just to stay where they are.
Okay. And how much you think you can cover with that at this point? Do you have a clue?
Not, you know, not at this point. I know that, you know, we have savings in healthcare, we had savings in healthcare, we have savings in trash. But, you know, that obviously is something, you know, that we have to look at, and we have to figure out, you know, what we can afford, what we can't afford. From the town's perspective, I think that we are in pretty decent shape. However, with a $3 million increase, that's a significant mountain to climb. But again, it's their restoration budget from 2008 or 2007 before they had all their cuts. So are you looking, I guess, the question is, do you want, how much of whatever you want us to spend on the town side to cover that cliff, if you want to take a vote and say, you know, we should cover $426,747 of the funding cliff on the school side? I don't know what you're asking, how much we can afford.
No, I'm just, I didn't hear it in your initial focus, and I just would say that I think we need to work closely with the school committee, the superintendent.
We always do.
And in the whole scheme of things, that if they have $800,000 need to keep current services, then I think we need to consider that as, you know, a priority, as we do with the police, the fire, and the other, you know, services that we provide the community, the highway. I just, I don't want that to get lost. I don't think we should, you know, make sure it's lost. We should fund it at 400, and then ask the rest of the town for an override or whatever, if we can, you know, do the whole thing.
Well, I don't, I would never support an override. But I will tell you that we have always worked very closely with the school department. We have weekly budget meetings with them. So we know where their issues are, and we will help them. I mean, that's our responsibility. They're no different than any other town department.
In your budget, you said priority, and I know it's hard to do this, but you, hiring the police officers is, is that number one?
That would be my number one.
How many police officers are you looking?
Priority. I think that we need, I'd like to see five additional hires. I don't know if that's going to be a reality, but the police department has been operating with two men on, you know, in the streets, and that's just, it's shameful, but it's also harmful. It's harmful to the police officers, and it's harmful to the community.
What dollar-wise would that be? Do you have any idea?
Chief, do you have any idea?
I think we submitted that in the budget proposal. I don't have that off the top of my head.
I thought it was close to 400,000.
$500,000, I think we were talking.
That doesn't include any contractual, that wouldn't include any contractual requirements? Because we're still in negotiations on the police department contract?
Well, the police department negotiations aren't going anywhere right now, but-
But assume they do, that would be on top of that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You also have to consider that when you start hiring additional police officers, you may need additional, you know, equipment, cruisers, and, you know, so the actual cost is significantly higher. A little different than with the fire department, where you hire, you know, you're not going to buy another fire truck to accommodate four additional firefighters, but you probably are going to need to consider some additional police cruisers, which are about $34,000 apiece. So when you look at it, when you outfit them, you're looking at approximately about $70,000 a man. 70, 75, chief?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then 34. I would say for every two, you'd need another cruiser, maybe, something along those lines. So you're looking at another $34,000. So, again, this is what I inherited. The police department was down in men. We've tried to sustain that level of manpower. But, you know, again, it's, we're trying to play catch-up. We're trying to play catch-up with personnel, we're trying to play catch-up with other important aspects of the budget. So that would be my number-one priority.
How about on the revenue side? Do you have any idea on where we stand? Projections on the revenue side for FY 14?
Well, that's, we have a commitment going out in February, which is our large local estimated receipt commitment for excise tax on cars.
I'm talking about FY 14. Any, anything from the State House as far as local aid or any of that?
Oh, you know, let me tell you something about the State House.
You could just answer yes or no. You don't have to. That means no, I guess.
I don't know.
No. The governor hasn't proposed this budget.
I'm going to a meeting next week when, you know, and I don't think there's going to be any NRC cuts. Okay? I think, I think the governor irrationally acted too quickly, but, you know, that's just, who am I? So I, I think that, you know, we have an obligation to support the schools, we have an obligation to support the town. And I want to make sure that everyone understands that we're going to try to do as best we can to do both. Okay?
This budget that you gave to us is basically-
Reflects those-
Everybody's priorities are in here.
Everyone's priority, no cuts, no anything. It's just a draft budget at the present time.
Is it kind of like a wish list?
Well, if you ask the departments, they'll tell you it's what they need. But, you know, in some cases, there are additional personnel, you know, for highway and for police.
The message wasn't level service or level funded, it was?
The message, the message initially was a one and a half percent increase for expenditures, and a specific request for police and highway to add additional personnel. Because I think, I think both departments are severely underfunded, both in manpower and in finances. Is there anything else you want to see in the budget that's not there right now? Well, obviously, we have some time. We're going to be meeting on the budget and bringing it up periodically from time to time.
A meeting with the finance committee on Wednesday?
That's my plan.
Tom, do you want to talk about your-
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if you could, not interrupt John, but if we could just jump ahead and have him start getting into his town manager report? Because I didn't have a chance to set up. I've just got a couple of slides that I want to present to the committee.
Okay, John, why don't we go to nine?
Well, we have financial policies, which I think are going to be important to whomever assumes this position. There was a, there's a letter in here that I had sent out to the Water Commission regarding the charging for water use. I think it's a requirement in my estimation, but if, the rates last year went up 25%, they've gone up 30% this year. There is essentially a need to, in greater detail, review the operational budget of the Water Department, and before a budget is passed in the Water Department, that they would be required to provide a rate study that shows exactly what the rate is capturing. I don't think that's ever been done, but I do think it's needed, only because if we are going to pay financially, we cannot afford to have fluctuations of 25% one year, 30% the next year. And, you know, those, that's a separate entity. We all know that. We created that. So, and I do think that they need to better advertise their rate hearing so that people know when their rates are actually going forward.
We made an invitation to them for our next meeting?
Yeah, I think they're, aren't they coming?
We invited them, yep.
Have they responded?
Not yet.
No, I wanted to go over the, the salary adjustments that I have, you know, proposed at this point for FY 13.
Before you get to that, can we just, these draft financial policies?
Do you have copies of them?
Oh, we do.
A lot of paper.
At some point in time, are you going to ask that we adopt these, or you?
Oh, no, absolutely you, yes. It's a board policy to adopt. And with respect to these policies, which we have never, I don't think, really have gotten into that kind of detail with.
These are great.
I will tell you that this was put together by the town accountant.
Was it?
Yeah. And magnificent job that she has done putting these together. I've tweaked it a little bit along the way. You will see in the management letter that there are a number of requirements that we develop policies, that we implement these policies. Those types of management letter discussions will start going away once we start doing that.
My only question is, my initial run-through, as far as the policies are going to affect certain departments or certain committees, have those folks been contacted to get their input? Like, I know there's one in here on the reserve fund transfers from the finance committee, there's things in here about abatements from the board of assessors. Have you contact, have you sent these out to those people to see if they have any?
I don't, right now, it's just an internal document among the finance team people. But if you look at the policy with respect to reserve fund, I don't think it's much different than what we have now, except that we're-
No, but I think we ought to get their input.
Yeah, of course, we will.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions on the financial policies?
Is this based on another towns? Did our treasurer previously worked out of something, or is this based on another town?
I think it's a compilation of a couple of towns that we have put together, and some of that is fitted uniquely for us.
No, I've reviewed them. I think from my perspective, they look excellent. So congratulations to those who are involved.
So you'll bring them back to us? John?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll bring them back to you.
All right, now you can go on to, if you would, break down the salary adjustments.
The, and I would, I'd like to go over, I know that this has always been contentious with respect to salary increases. But I have to say that, since I have been here, I walked in this door making $118,000, and I'm walking out making $118,000. So kudos to Kevin for looking to increase that, to try to get somebody who's willing to work in the town. If I can break it down into two components, and first of all, what I'd like to say is from a strategic perspective, no new dollars are used for any of these increases. These increases, with respect to the chief and the deputy chief, lump together their entire salaries. It takes, it takes into account all of the monies that we spend in each of their budgets for salaries, for the chief and for the deputy chief. The career incentive and any other monies that are paid outside of their salary budget were lumped together, and they're now under one salary number. The increase looks a lot, looks large, but it isn't because most of the money that they're getting, they have gotten all along. It's just in different accounts in the budget. The chief, not all, we had discussed with the chief, an increase to his budget. I also discussed it with the finance committee. And actually, Rick Franny had brought up the idea that, you know, if he can save that money in overtime, then we should give it to him as part of his salary. I thought that was a very good idea, and I think he's still making less than the previous chief in the department, and I believe he's done far more to improve that department than anyone else in recent time. So you pay for performance. If you want qualified, competent, capable people, you've got to pay them a salary that's commensurate with what they do. And really, from my perspective, the board doesn't know what each of these members do, each of these staff people do. But I do, and I work with them on a daily basis. So when I look at what we did with the chief, he had a base salary of 95,434, educational incentive, 23,859, holiday pay, vacation buyback, uniform allowance, deferred comp, fitness for duty, and sick leave incentive. You remember, we eliminated all contracts that, outside of myself as the town manager. There were all these individual contracts that were out there, and the board wanted to eliminate them. In eliminating contracts, you have to make some very difficult decisions in doing so. If I could tell you that we saved just what the chief's contract alone by allowing him to follow, or requiring him to follow the personnel bylaw, which is now in place, he would have been eligible for $56,000 in separation pay. We took that liability away for the town. So there were exchanges. There were, there was give and take in what the town had as a potential liability, and how we eliminated that liability. We lumped those salaries into one bottom-line salary, so the chief's new salary is $133,436, of which he was probably getting all of $120,000 or more just in his different line items of the budget, which was never reported out. And if you look at the Chris Cutter, you'll see that there is a slight savings there. And if you look at the Chris Cutter, you'll see that there is a slight savings there. And with respect to John, not all, and I think that this is important for everyone to understand that when you look at a number, it's not only about the number, it's about the individual behind that number and what they've done and what they have, and where they have brought this department, his department in particular. And I think both chief and deputy chief of the Police Department and the Fire Chief have done extremely competent jobs in managing with less resources each and every year. I do have salary surveys that I'm going to give you at the end of my presentation. But I will tell you that some of these individuals haven't had a salary increase in 2009 or 2010. If you, again, if you want to be a progressive community and you want to attract talent, you're going to need to, as you have recognized in the salary range that you have set for the town manager, that you're going to need to pay that individual to do the job. So, I think that that's important. The salary surveys, we did for building commissioner, we did for assistant town clerk, we did for veterans agent, we did for town clerk's position itself, which was adopted at town meeting, and for the public health agent. I will tell you that with respect to the veterans agent, for example, the veteran agent's salary is 35, was $35,817. The average salary of East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, Rockland, Whitman, Hingham, Middleboro, and Bridgewater, although the Bridgewater entity hires a police chief to do the veteran, retired police chief to the veterans' work, averaged about $44,000. So, when you look at the salary survey for these individuals, and of course, if you look at the last time the veteran agent had a pay increase, I think he's, it was probably six, seven years ago, Joe? When was the last time? Five years? Okay. And the salary increase, the salary that he's currently getting, I think is equivalent to what you would pay a top step clerk in the clerks' union. I think that it's out of whack, and it's probably because Joe wasn't part of any desire to create this type of contract where people got paid additional money and went through the steps. Leo and Jack, exceptional employees of the town, we have put in for, a stipend for them that will be rolled into their base. Ken and Cannell, Lisa Dodge, and Jack Kane, all of this money came from within the Highway Department operating budget. Again, what we're looking at here is, again, rolling, the concept was rolling those stip, rolling all of that extra money into one base pay. Lisa Dodge probably hasn't had an increase in six, seven years. Kenan?
Two nine.
Two nine, okay. Either two nine or two ten, and after that, very few people received anything at all. John Stone and Chris and Divine have both received increases. John Stone is probably an extremely valuable employee to the town as a whole. This individual is always able, always ready to help any department in town hall. And actually, I followed the recommendations of the wastewater commissioners when they wanted to save about $30,000, and it's not reported here because it's something I, that we probably, we created a new position. This wasn't a salary increase. This was a new position that was created, the assistant operations manager for the department. And what we were able to do is to not fill a position in the department and create this assistance position and saving the town about $20,000 or $30,000. So, on its face value, it looks like we're spending a lot of money, but we're saving some money as well. And I think that that's a responsibility that we all have. With respect to Dory Jamison, there's a stipend for $2,500 and a taken her salary from 87 to 92. The $2,500 stipend is required by statute. The Board of Selectmen has named her as the municipal hearings officer. The statute requires, under the Municipal Hearings Officers Act, to hire, to pay $2,500 to conduct hearings, and the individual has to go to classes and be certified each year. That is a requirement under the statute. It's better than going to court. And you want to go to court and spend additional money in legal fees, you'll spend more than that one time, the one time that you go to court. Nancy Hurst hasn't had an increase since 2009, probably one of the most loyal, dedicated individuals in this town hall. Sharon White. Sharon White's salary, if you look at the salary surveys, should be somewhere around $68,000. She's got 34 years in public health service, not the most popular health agent in town, but she enforces CMRs and she protects the public health. And she's a very good employee and somebody who not only brings back far more than she were expending, but she protects the health and welfare of the residents of this community. Sue Mokwin and Laurie Berry, the, Sue Mokwin's increase will not go into effect until after her six-month review. Laurie Berry has been working in the town for a number of years. This is the first increase that she has seen probably since 2009. Marshall Adams and Joe Collantonio, as I've indicated to you, and Liz Shea are the others on this list who we have provided increases to. The total increase amount is $112,205.61. All of those, all of those dollars are coming from within the operating budget. There are no monies that are coming from outside or would require additional money to be appropriated as a result of these increases. As I had indicated to you on a breakdown, I believe that those salary increases from Dory Jamison all the way down to Liz Shea are coming from within the salary line item of the budget. And that includes the assistant town clerk salary, the accounting clerk salary, and the IT salary. So, we're taking money from the salary portion of the budget, committing it to salary items, and we're taking monies from within the department for the Police Department, Fire Department, the wastewater department, and the Highway Department from within the operational budgets of each of those departments. And my rationale is very simple. I don't want these individuals to be in a position where they're waiting another three, four, or five years for compensation that should be due them for the work that they do and the manner in which they do their work. I'm very happy and proud to work with the men and women of this town hall who really have the town's interest at heart. They've had it from day one. They love this town, and they want to see it succeed. So, I think that when you look at these adjustments, these are adjustments that will be in place for quite a while, and I don't believe that there are going to be adjustments that are going to require additional adjustments each and every year thereafter, at least for the next three or four years. So, I think that, you know, this is certainly where we stand right now.
Any questions?
Nope.
The only question is, to be very honest with you, it's somewhat, and I understand and I respect everybody in this room, but as a member sitting on this board, I got that to the back door. You're going to remote to hand out some information that the town's opposition, as I understand. I only wish as a member of that board I could have had that two weeks ago, three weeks ago, or that some of the, some of the, you know, things in the community, you know, argued, defended very well. But I'd just say, as a member of this board, to be given the information of the survey. We talked about the Personnel Committee coming forward. I thought that was a committee that was supposed to, they were supposed to make the recommendations. You know, we did, we did at the Springtown meeting, we did vote that in. Still not in place. So, to me, it's almost like a backup. It's almost like a, you know, thing, it would have been nice to have that, follow that process, but.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, but we have two of the three members currently, you know, in place.
No, 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 I understand. I think it's something that we should look at. You know, nobody should really be mistreated, you know, four or five years, that information is there. I don't know that, all right? I have to go. But then, you know, this big number comes up and it kind of catches me as a member of that, this board, it catches me off guard, that's all.
Okay, I'm going to give you this stuff.
Thanks. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Oh, Shelley's here from Sage.
Oh. Where is she?
Been a long wait.
Well, let's finish up with you first, John, and then...
Okay. What I, the final thing that I would like to say is that I think that, and I understand that we've gone back and forth with respect to hiring freezes or spending freezes or wage and benefit.
Well, that's a whole different topic, right? I thought as far as the salary schedule goes and...
Yeah.
I'd just like to go, and I think John will have, you know, some comments.
I know, but I want to let Shelley come up and...
You want Shelley to come up first?
Yeah. Yeah.
I do have the elder care, and I'd like to get home. So, thanks very much, I appreciate that. My name is Shelley Vojine, and I live here in Abington, and I'm on the Sage Committee. I'm actually reporting on the agricultural side of Sage and what's going on, including our farmers market, our community garden, and of course, the gardening classes that are going on. We do have a meeting scheduled with our vendors and the community garden folks in February to come up with a set of rules in a way that we want to participate in those functions. We've had some discussion already, and I think we're seeing some real progress come out of it to really step these venues forward, especially in the farmers market area. We're reaching out to get new vendors, to have farmers within this area coming in, and we have contacted three new vendors that are farmers that will probably be joining us this year, which is very exciting. Anytime we can help a family farmer, I want to keep them in business. Being an old farm girl myself, we really want to do that. As far as everything else on the committee, I am in the process of giving gardening classes at the library, and we had a very good response to the first class. I was very happy with it. We have a lot of people that are very interested. They are now interested in going into vegetable gardening. I think that is just a sign of the times. People are finding it tough, and they're going back to grassroots. And I had some ladies from the gardening club, they had grown flowers, but now they need to branch out, and now they're going to do vegetables, and we're covering all that in the classes. So, I think it's going very well. Do you have any questions for me on anything? Thank you.
Appreciate all your...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're up. No, he's down.
Okay, first of all, I'd just like to start off by saying I support everything that John said about the quality of the employees that we have in town. But as I think members of the committee, or Andy, you know that I've been pushing now since November to look at imposing a temporary hiring wage benefit and spending freeze. And again, this is my opinion and not necessarily any opinions of the Board of Selectmen at this point. I guess the first question would be why the concern? And again, over the last two or three months, it just seems like the economic news is scattered at best, but as you can see in the Wall Street Journal, tepid job growth was in the weekend edition. And if you follow the Wall Street Journal, with the fiscal cliff at the federal level, there's still a lot of uncertainty there. At the state level, this is from the Beacon on December 2012, which basically, the caption is "State Revenue Picture Worsens." So, again, John, I appreciate that, you know, hopefully, you indeed are right, and there won't be any 9C cuts, but this is in addition to what we saw in October. The other thing that concerns me as a private citizen is the Boston Globe's social security hike goes into effect, cutting most paychecks by 2%. Now, that's not only for people that are employed by a company, it's also for self-employed people where it's going up from 12.2 to 14.2. That's a real hard cut in somebody's salary. Boston Globe in the bottom, tax hikes, hikes, new fees way to fund mass transit system. The betting is that the governor will recommend an increase from, I think it's 5.35, 5.25 state income tax, and increase that. And the last thing that, you know, I just wanted to point out is that Abington wouldn't be the first community to put on spending freezes. As you can see, Cohasset, Westport, Bridgewater have put in some degree of spending cuts. So, that's why I'm concerned, because I guess I'm not seeing the rosy economic picture that maybe others are out there. My other concern, and again, I'd admit that I'm probably violating ethics law here because I clearly have a financial interest in this next slide, as I think many of you do that have property in Abington. And that is, property values have continued to decline, not only in Abington, but across the state and across the country. But in Abington, our property values in the last four years have gone down almost 15% of $50,000, where the average tax bills have increased almost 14%, 13.7 of $572. Okay, so what's the point there? Well, the point is that I think whether it's an implicit or explicit goal of the Board of Selectmen or members of this financial community is to do what we can to make proper investment decisions to try to reverse that trend. Now, this slide in itself means nothing unless you look at other communities. And again, and John, I think you sent out something for Springfield, Mass., which basically had property taxes in line. I think it was from the Mass Municipal, it was an article that you sent out, but it had property increases in this range. Well, I think it was 3.8, but the point was, is that if you look at the MMA or the Assessors Organization, that's in line with what's happening in other communities. But what's not in line is the declining property values that we're seeing in this town. And the other thing that's of a great concern to me is, being a former assessor, take a look in FY 2013. The number of single-family parcels increased by six, six. That indicates that there's not a lot of new growth in this town to support a budget that doesn't have in it cost containment, you know, those sorts of things. Rationale for a phrase. Well, in my opinion, I think we need to react in a positive manner to changing economic conditions as not to affect the delivery of municipal service at the current levels. And John, you heard me a minute ago, I do appreciate, and I think everybody does, that what we have in place now, we've worked long and hard to get to current levels, and certainly you have in your 10-year... you have in your tenure here, has this board and other members of the community. We don't want to see a step back at this point. And the other one is avoid discretionary pay or employee benefit decisions that may be contrary to public opinion, are not aligned with town's ability to pay, are not in line with comparable salary or benefit packages. And over the long term, I think we need to make sure we are avoiding costs and making the proper investment decisions to help reverse declining property value. What this policy is not, and I will reiterate this, it's important to state right up front that imposing a temporary hiring, wage, benefit, and spending limit freeze should not be construed as being critical of the town manager, his management team, and the professional staff and employees that provide a high level of service and dedication to the town of Abington. And further, it should not be construed as that the financial management of this town is in disarray, that structurally, I think Abington is in good shape. We've heard many times that we've put money to the tune of about $1.1 million into the rainy day account. But again, I think if other people came up and the other 200 employees in town came up, each one of those department managers would stress the service that they provide the town also. So it's got nothing to do with level of service or commitment to the community. What would a freeze look like? Well, it would intended to be in effect until the end of the fiscal year on June 30th, 2013, or until changed, amended, or rescinded at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen, or until changed, amended, or rescinded at the annual town meeting occurring in April or May. The guidelines prohibits any discretionary wage, pay, or employee benefit adjustments that are not statutory or contractually based requirements. Any newer replacement hires, whether budgeted or not. Any discretionary department expense spending, which I think, John, you put out communication to your team to control any discretionary spending. This is for employees in departments under the purview of the Board of Selectmen without first a review and approval by the Board of Selectmen in consultation with the town manager. Exception to the rule, the chairman or the vice chairperson would be granted the authority to review and approve any discretionary employee wage, hiring, benefit, and discretionary spending requests where time is of the essence. An example might be a firefighter goes down and we need to replace that individual sooner than the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Again, the key here is it's temporary and there are exceptions, you know, based on these guidelines. Within the scope of the freeze, all managers, department heads, chiefs, employees under the purview of the Board of Selectmen as the employee of record for the town. Example, salary increase adjustments, town manager would need to seek approval from the Board of Selectmen before granting any employee a salary increase adjustment outside the contractual requirements and the town's personnel bylaws. Extra weeks vacation, town manager would need to seek approval from the Board before granting an extra week's vacation outside any contractual requirements. Vacation buyback being rolled into base salary. Again, ditto. Outside the scope of the freeze, any contractual or statutory requirements for hiring, salary, benefit adjustments, or department expense spending. School committee and school department personnel, and Abington-Rockland Joint Water Commissioners and Water Department personnel, those are the ones that came to mind, there might be others. But note, the Board of Selectmen, if this policy or this guideline goes into place, would encourage the school committee and water commissioners to follow these guidelines for the period of time it is in effect. So what are some examples? An employee retires, sickly buyback. If it's a contractual requirement, they're paid whatever's owed to them. Extra weeks vacation, perhaps a library employee has 20, just had 20 years of service with the town and contractually is required for an extra week's vacation. Or an employee maybe in the highway department on January 1st is entitled to another 15% salary adjustment. All those are outside the scope of this freeze. Now, just before I take questions, I just want to respond to a couple of comments, John, that I think Mike Franny alluded to, Kenny Coyle certainly did at the last meeting. When you look at these salary increases, they're not salary increases, we know that. I think the police department personnel has indicated that they have a base salary, they are entitled every year in perpetuity to the Quinn bill adjustment. So I think in my estimation appropriately, you rolled it into their salary. There was other things in there, stipends and things like that, that we're paying them now and we'll pay them in perpetuity. That should be rolled in. But for me, I'm just dumbfounded that when you go around town, it's spinning, we've spent $100,000 to $200,000 and you don't give the Board of Selectmen the opportunity to defend these. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, I had no knowledge this was going on, I don't know if the chairman did, the vice chairman, or any members of the Selectmen. And again, it's, for me, it's more of helping you by letting us help you. Now, there's other things that I do take issue with, and again, I mentioned some of them. Again, I'm dumbfounded why, if we have vacation buyback, and just for people in the audience, vacation buyback, unlike many employers in the private industry, has vacation accrued every month. And at the end of the year, they may allow you to roll over five days, or it's a policy of use it or lose it. In Abington and I think other municipalities, that vacation is buyback, bought back at a certain rate. But when I see information that comes up that three weeks of vacation buyback is incorporated into the base, I have to say why? Did the employee give up that three weeks? That's in perpetuity. To me, that isn't something that should go into the base. I've talked to you before, and again, I think the extra weeks vacation, kudo to Sharon White. You know, I would be a little less harsh on her. I think that the members of the community are warming to her and they like to see her on the beat and basically doing her roles and responsibilities. And I certainly agree with you and working with you and Andy personally on this health budget, that to me, she went above and beyond, she was very ready with information. And she might be entitled to an extra week's vacation, but I just think it's a bad precedent for the community. And there's other ones that are in there that are like that. But the last point would be, what we've created is a public impression problem. I think we've potentially established morale problems because when somebody in the rank and file is getting 1, 1.5% from where they were last year, or in some cases, they didn't get an increase, and then they see, quote, "the brass potentially getting increases," it sets up a bad organizational situation. And I think going forward, based on comments I heard tonight, certainly want to support the police, want to support the fire, but we also want to support the schools and other departments, highway, and you can go right on down the list. But I think, I think you've been pretty clear that, in the charter, support you, that you make these decisions, but again, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I think we've encouraged you in the past to let us know these things, and you haven't, and I think that, for me, I think based on the economic news, that I would be recommending to put on a salary, wage, employee benefit, and spending freeze. Thank you.
Any questions? Comments? No?
Well, yeah.
I have, I have.
Just waiting for somebody to go before me.
I know. Go ahead.
Just a couple of things, Kevin, I mean, Tom. A couple of years ago, we did this, and what happens is, and you alluded to the fact that somebody, you know, well, in the school department, not knocking the school department, we had a freeze happen, you know, we tried to impose the same thing because of the same concerns, and yet, they were able to do and go about their business as said. I really think, not, I know where you're coming from, I think it's a good idea. I think the biggest problem I have is sitting on the board is not knowing this type of stuff. Not that I wouldn't support it, I certainly, I have probably a concern going unfunded liabilities, you told me time and time again with the town, $40 million in the hole for health insurance and stuff like that. I have a thing, but I think we have a finance committee in place that's looking at some of these issues, we have a financial team, we have good solid department heads that are very concerned with it. I don't know, I don't know, I kind of in betwixt and in between is whether we'd want to go over what, what we talked about, trying to put more police on, more firefighters on, more highway on, if we can. I mean, I think, I think the biggest thing that has happened is that station two, I think we, to open up in the firehouse, because it does give a tremendous amount of support to that section of town. I don't know, I'm just, I'm not probably there to support a hiring freeze, myself personally. Not that I don't support the work you've done on this and I know where you're coming from. And I think if anything good would come out of this, it should be that if the town hall would let us as a member of the board, I'll be honest with you, I'm a little bit insulted over the way these things come out in the 11th hour. You know, I think, I think there was over 180 pages, if I had typed everything out, that came across in this packet or with the budget and everything like that. That's a lot for somebody that doesn't like to read. But, you know, and then this stuff here is very important to me. I don't, it's awkward for me to sit in front of these people, I know these people, I'm not trying to, you know, to go over this, but had I had this, or I don't even think a lot of this would have been necessary if more or less the town office, the town, you know, administration had kept the board more informed. And then I, you know, that's the way I feel.
Just one point, though. Mike, I defer to the finance committee, but I'm not sure if they were made aware of what was happening here.
Again, it's an overall thing, it's something.
Just, I think we went through this at the last meeting, as far as the lack of information regarding these pay raises. I think John acknowledged the fact that, he understood that he should have been probably more upfront and given us that information. So I think that's done and over with. I don't think we can rehash that at this point, I don't want to rehash it. Go ahead, Kevin.
No, I was going to say something similar. I think we find ourselves in a unique position, obviously, in terms of moving forward. We, as a matter of fact, we're in a lame duck situation. So I think it would be prudent, and it'll be my motion, that effective forthwith, that we, the Board of Selectmen establish a salary and benefit increase freeze that are not contractually agreed to presently without the approval of the Board of Selectmen. And I think that does several things. One, it reinforces the issue of the questions that have emanated and, you know, again, not to relive history, but what has transpired. I personally, as you can see by when I did the comparability study for the town manager's position, is I am a big supporter in making sure the positions are within the market. And I think John has done that. However, moving forward, because of the ambiguity of the current incumbent, I think the Board of Selectmen has to establish some parameters to give the public some comfort level that we have a handle on the situation. And I had a number of questions and concerns from people who have, again, hear the rumors. So I think, with that said, I think we have to move forward, again, from this day forward, that effective forthwith, that it shall be the policy of the Board of Selectmen, that no salary or benefit increase freeze, that there will be a salary and benefit increase freeze that is not contractually, already contractually agreed to, without the expressed approval of the Board of Selectmen. That's my motion.
I would support that.
Any discussion on that?
You have no end date, you want to put the Springtown meeting?
Effective, effective until such time as the situation changes, and we'll review that, and when and if we have another town manager on board, or when and if we have the issues with town meeting come forward, we can review it at that point in time. But I don't want to put an ending date on it until such time as we feel more comfortable in terms of where we're going. I think it's a prudent management move.
I agree, but I think we should have an end date just so we can, and then we vote again after the town meeting, that's my thoughts.
We have a motion to second.
I would second it, yeah.
Well, you've already seconded the motion, so.
Someone, I agree with Kenny.
Well, then put it for the current fiscal year, then, June 30th.
Yeah, that would be fine, I think that's what Tom was.
That's what I was alluding to.
Yeah.
Or sooner, if Board of Selectmen or the town meeting wants to trump.
Then it can be reviewed at a time and place to be determined.
Just procedurally, can I just say something? And Tom, you and I have had this discussion, and many times. I don't think it's fair to the administration or the other members of the board for you to come in and lay out this sort of information without giving it, giving it to us in advance. You knew you were going to make this presentation. We've had no time at all to take a look at your presentation, to take a look at the proposed policy, and now tonight, which we are violating policies that we adopted five years ago in trying to adopt a policy, that this is the first time it's plopped on us without any advance notice. And I've had this discussion with you through emails many, many times and asked you not to do it, and here we are again tonight. To me, it's just unfair. It is totally unfair to the other members of this board for you to come in and start proposing policies and expect for us to vote on those tonight. And for that reason, I wouldn't vote, I would not support.
Well, I think, can I, I think the issue too becomes sometimes we all can get caught up in procedure. And I think sometimes we have to respond to the situation at hand immediately. And I think, given the fact that the concerns that have been presented, that members of the board were not informed of, you know, issues that percolated out into the public, I think it has to be addressed. I would agree with you in terms of, you know, the fairest thing to do is to, everybody to be, have issues before them, but I think in concert with that, we would just give them tonight, you know, the issues of how the raises were determined. So I think.
No, that's not true, Kevin. We were given this in our package.
We were just given.
We've given it to us, actually, parts of it were given to us.
We were just given the comparabilities tonight.
It's been an ongoing discussion for the last two meetings.
Fine.
For Mr. Dion to come in tonight and plop this down, and I don't think.
All right.
With all due, well, if I could finish, I don't think with all due respect, it's an emergency situation that the town manager is going to go out and hand out raises again in the next two weeks. I don't think that's the case, but, you know, you have a motion and it's been seconded.
That's right, I have a motion, it's been seconded, let's vote on it.
Let me just say something, it has been the policy of this board to never accept a policy on the first reading, and basically, that's what we're doing. We've never done that. If we was to propose policy, we usually sat on it until the next meeting, allowed for public input if there was any, and then voted the policy. To my recollection, that's always been a sacred area where we said, we're never going to make a policy at a set meeting. And kind of, I can kind of very much see what Andy's saying.
Listen, I just want my position out there, so when, when I get hammered by the public and they say, "Why didn't you do something?", I'm going to say, "You know something, I tried."
That's fine.
And I don't, and I'm not hung up on the issue of procedure when it comes to an issue that needs to be, to be, take effect, in my opinion, forthwith.
I disagree.
And I think we can, I think we can all vote our conscience and let it go where it goes.
I have no problem with that. Ken?
I agree with you 100%. However, this has been on the agenda before, I pulled it last minute, we knew this, we knew what this discussion was going to entail. We did, it's right there, it's right there on the agenda. Discussion on spending, hiring, and benefit.
Correct, but we didn't, we weren't proposed, and look at the policies.
We didn't get to see the presentation, but we knew it was going to be discussed. We knew it. And actually, Andy, at one point, we did have a meeting, it was just a special meeting, I think just on a.
There's been that, there has never been a policy, listen, everybody, as Kevin said, can vote their conscience. Me personally, it seems to me as though this board adopts policies and just doesn't, ignores them all the time, so that's fine. And if you want to do it again, that's okay. So why don't we move forward, we'll take a vote, everybody knows what they want to do, unless you have something that's going to.
We did have a special meeting just to talk about hiring, and we never got to the freeze.
It was withdrawn.
It was on the agenda, I remember.
It was withdrawn by Mr. Dion.
We still had a meeting.
Yeah, but we didn't discuss it, it was withdrawn. Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Just, I just accept the reprimand, Andy, but I would say, we're not looking at a policy like we got tonight of financial policies where there's 100 or so pages, and we've got, in effect, a weekend to look at them. You know, last meeting, there were things, but again, Andy, it's both ways.
I'm not going to change my mind, John.
Okay, but I just, for the public's edification, the only policy I'm talking about here is page two.
I understand that.
What's the big deal about that, page three?
My point is, Tom, we adopt policies all the time, we'll adopt this policy and we'll probably violate that one too, so what difference does it make?
You hurt your own clause. Because your policy you just mentioned was handed to us, and it's in writing, we just looked at the board.
Right. And it would have been very simple for you to ask John or Dory to include that in the package, and we could have all taken a look at it and come in here prepared to maybe debate it. You come in with facts and figures, I don't know if those facts and figures are correct, I haven't had a chance to look at them.
What, facts and figures? Why can't we debate it now?
Because I don't know what they, I don't, this is the first time I've seen them, that's my whole.
Andy, Andy, it's, look at.
Tom, that's my whole, my whole purpose here is that it's unfair for you to come in, all prepared with facts, figures, slides, and expect us to somehow rebut it. We can't, because we haven't had a chance to review it, it's unfair.
Move the question.
My opinion. Go ahead, Ken, move the question. All right, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Opposed.
I'm opposed.
All righty.
Public comment, number 10, anybody have any public comment?
I just have one question, real quick. I'm just concerned about hiring, this is what I'm coming on.
There wasn't an emotion, no.
No, it was, it was salaries, I believe.
It was salaries, it was salary free.
Nothing to do with hiring.
Right.
Any other public comment?
Nope.
No, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some only.
And a second? Second or a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Drink water. This is important.